Good evening. I'm going to try and start us on time. And I will do that by reading an opening statement, which is more or less like this. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on December the 6th, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting is being given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official notice board at the Princeton Municipal Complex, and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the first day of December 2017. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Ms. Suri?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. We're going to start, unfortunately, with some housekeeping. We have to memorialize some resolutions, the first of which is for 229 South Harrison Street, and it carries the file number Z1717-509. This was circulated with your packet of information. If there are any changes that are needed to this, or modifications, we should make them now. If it meets with your approval, I'd like a motion to approve as presented or as modified, and a second to that motion. So moved. I have a motion to accept.
A second.
And we have a second. I guess you have to call the roll, do you?
I will.
Because there are only a limited number of us that are allowed to say yes.
Correct. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is for 175 Cedar Lane, and that carries the file number Z1717-530. So the same procedure, it was circulated, if it needs modification, we should do it now. If not, motions, and seconders. So moved. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Attorney, you can...
I will. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The third one of these is 26 Moore Street, which is file number Z1717-530. That's the same.
Yeah.
That can't be right, does it? Do you remember what the corrected file number is for that? We've got, the previous one was a 530 also. I think that came up actually in the...
It must be a mistake on our end, so we'll have to figure out.
Okay. So we'll recognize that the file number given was incorrect, because it's the same as the previous one that we've approved. So let's just call this 530A to distinguish it. And if we have any corrections apart from that to make, we should try and do that now. If not, a motion and a second.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a second for the motion?
Second.
And a second for the motion. There we go.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And the last one of the memorializations is 9 to 11 Aiken Avenue, and the file number Are there any changes that are required on that? If not, I'd like a motion to approve and a second.
I move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion for approval, second for that motion?
Second.
Your second, is it?
Yes.
Good.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And now we come for what you're all here for. The first case we are going to hear this evening is the Bun Drive case. That's Princeton Community Housing, well, Princeton Community Village, and the case number on that is Z1717-528. If you'll come up, I'll ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board and to the record, and then we'll give you an opportunity to make your case.
Mr. Bridger, before we swear you in, I'll note on the record that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application. If you raise your right hand, you swear your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I do. Good evening. Just want to point out, use the map here to show you a little bit of what, you know, orientate the site plan on the applicant. Princeton Community Village has applied for a site plan and a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-72, which is the expansion of a nonconforming use, to permit a parking lot for the low and moderate housing development known as Princeton Community Village. It's off of Bun Drive here. There's a circular drive known as Carl Lake Boulevard, and this little hashed area here is enlarged here, and they're proposing 25 parking spaces. In addition, there are four on each side, which will, are kind of in the case of, if they come into any construction difficulties in the project, so they could move it to one side or the other. The existing Princeton Community Village use is a noncompliant use in the OR1 zone. That zone's subject to the Use and Bulk Regulations in accordance with 10B 246 and 268. The expansion of the parking lot is considered an expansion of a nonconforming use, and a D2 variance must be considered in the following manner. I'll just go through this real quickly. No variance or other relief may be granted under the terms of this section, unless such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Following items must be considered when reviewing use variances. The applicant has the burden of proof with demonstrating special reasons for the granting of the variance, as well as the negative criteria. And there's several bulk variances required. In accordance with 10B 284, the parking stall size shall be 9 by 19. Applicant is requesting a 9 by 18 parking stall. In accordance with 10B 289, one shade tree is required for each 3.4 parking spaces. Eight trees are required, none are proposed. In accordance with 10B 288, Section A, Subsection C, requires that parking lots in excess of 10 spaces shall be screened from adjacent uses, not separated by a public way. This shall be accomplished by an installation of maintenance of evergreens and deciduous trees and shrubs and such other species, and sizes, as will, within two growing seasons, produce a solid screening at several appropriate heights. And there's one final variance, 10B 317.1, Section 11. It's a variance for the height of the parking lot light poles. The requirement is 14 feet maximum, and they're proposing a 16-foot height. They're also requesting a design waiver in accordance with Section 10B 227, which for each existing tree removed, one replacement tree is required, and they're proposing none. The proposal will result in the removal of 12 existing trees and a site disturbance of approximately 7,800 square feet. As I mentioned earlier, they are not proposing any tree plantings. The parking space development will increase impervious coverage by 4,000 square feet. All the stormwater runoff from the new parking lot flows to an existing detention basin, where the rate of runoff is limited to an increase of 0.34 cubic feet, CFS, for the 100-year storm. Princeton's stormwater ordinance allows an increase of up to .5 CFS. Therefore, this project meets with the Princeton Stormwater Ordinance. In terms of traffic effects, we anticipate that the addition of these 25 spaces will have a negligible effect on traffic, and staff has some comments in terms, we would suggest that the applicant consider using LED lighting, and they should also be prepared to discuss what will be done with the excess boulders that are present on the site that are encountered during construction. And the application was also reviewed by the Princeton Environmental Commission, and I'll go over their recommendations. They do request that the applicant plant trees in accordance with the 3.4 trees per space. The eight trees that are required with that, and the 12 that are being taken down, is 20 trees, and they are suggesting that they consider planting some of the trees that will be taking a hit from the emerald ash borer, either at PCV or perhaps at municipal land where ash trees are removed. They suggest planting evergreens in the straw area between the right-of-way and the proposed parking lot would provide a screen and help with stormwater retention. They are suggesting an EV, electrical vehicle charger be provided in the new parking areas. They suggested any new trees planted meet the minimum 2.5-inch caliper. They're suggesting that permeable papers be used to reduce the stormwater runoff. They are also suggesting LED lights, and they had some comments. They suggested perhaps angled parking should be explored to allow better sightlines from the driver to oncoming traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular. They're concerned about the 25 cars backing out onto the development with many children. They should consider creating a one-way street on Carl Lake Boulevard with the entrance at the top of the hill from the bus stop, taking away one car lane of Carl Lake Boulevard would make room for pedestrian, biking pedestrian movement, and leave more room for parking. They suggest that the four spaces on the western side of the lot designated as alternate should be used for parking, and that the first four spaces of the proposed plan should be considered the alternate spaces. This would prevent the removal of trees. The project was also reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee, and they did not have any comments to add. And then the Site Plan Review Advisory Board also reviewed it, and I'll go over their comments. They recommended approval of the use variance. They recommended approval of the 9 by 18 parking stall size. They recommend that the landscape screening requirement from adjacent uses be waived because the project does not impact the right-of-way. And they also suggested that the design waiver for the additional shade trees, SPRAB accepted the board's, or the applicant's testimony that this would be a financial hardship if they were required to pay into the Tree Replacement Fund for the trees that they cannot provide on-site. They would prefer that, PCV would prefer that the money go towards future construction of affordable housing units. And SPRAB also suggested that LED light fixtures should be provided in the light stanchions. The light stanchions at 14 feet in height is recommended to eliminate a variance. The boulders found on the property can be used and installed along the fringe within the open recreation area. In the parking area, as designed, will impact several healthy and mature trees. Therefore, it was suggested that the applicant study the design and see if there were some adjustments that can be made with the parking spaces to save as many trees as possible. That's a quick synopsis of the case. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Bridger?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Attorney, it's your turn.
Good evening. My name is Tom Letizia, and I'm attorney for Pepperhannon, representing the applicant Princeton Community Village Associates. As was noted on Mr. Bridger, this is a minor site plan application with certain variance to construct 25 parking spaces, and I don't believe there are any other...
Now, it should be... Hopefully, you heard me. I'm Tom Letizia, and I'm an attorney for the applicant Princeton Community Village Associates. And this is a minor site plan application with certain variance relief. Just a little background, I'm sure every board member is familiar with Princeton Community Village. It is a 100% low and moderate income residential development that has been in existence since 1975, located on Bun Drive. And it consists of 239 residential units and 381 parking spaces, and it has been contributing to the municipality's affordable housing obligation for many rounds. And what's sort of unique about the site, and I was surprised by this until I reviewed the zoning, the project is technically not permitted by the zoning. It's located in an office research zone. So what that means is that the use is a pre-existing nonconforming use. It's allowed to remain, but what it translates to is that any time Princeton Community Housing would like to do some new development on the site is going to mean, unless the zoning is changed, coming back to this board for what's called a D2 variance, which is for an expansion of a nonconforming use. And so that is the situation we find ourselves in today. There is a need to construct more parking to meet the parking demands of the residents. And so therefore, we have to build additional parking, but that means we have to come to this board for a D variance, an expansion of a nonconforming use. So that is the sort of significant variance that's being requested tonight. Now, there are some bulk variances, or C2 variances, being requested, and Mr. Bridger went through those, but I'll just reiterate, and we'll provide testimony and support of each one. The first one has to do with parking stall size. Ordinance requires 9 by 19. We're proposing 9 by 18, which is a fairly common waiver or variance normally asked for. It would save on impervious cover on the site, and therefore, I think, we think it's a reasonable request. The second one has to do with planting within the parking. The ordinance requires one shade tree for every 10 parking spaces, which would translate into, I forget what the number is. What was the number?
Eight.
Eight, eight trees. As we will explain, the area where this parking is going to be located is already well-treed, so we don't think adding some additional trees, even if we could do that, would really add any benefit. The third bulk variance has to do with screening of parking. Again, there's a requirement that for any lot that includes more than 10 spaces, you have to screen the parking from adjacent uses. Again, we'll explain that, given the location of this, which is interior to the site, there are no adjacent uses to screen, and again, the parking is already well-screened from landscaping on the site. So we think that's a reasonable request. Mr. Bridger mentioned about light stanchions. The ordinance requires a 14-foot height. All the lighting on this site today is at 16-feet height. We like to match that, maintain that height at 16 feet. That requires a variance. There was a suggestion by SPRAB, I believe also now, I just learned from the Environmental Commission, that LED lighting be installed. We will agree to do that. And then finally, is, it's not a variance, but a design waiver, and this is your tree replacement ordinance. There is a requirement that for, there be a one-to-one replacement of trees of 8-inch caliber or more. And if there is no replanting on-site of those trees, there's a, there is supposed to be a contribution, which the municipality can use to, in theory, to plant trees in municipal parks or property. For this applicant, that would mean $600 per tree, which translates into approximately $8,000. The applicant would prefer that that money be put towards future affordable housing, which is being planned on this site. And also, as we'll explain, trying to plant more trees on the site really, again, is very difficult to do. It's already well-treed, and we'll explain that. So we will ask for your consideration of a waiver of that requirement in this particular instance. So with that, I'd like to ask Ed Truselli, who is the Executive Director of Princeton Community Housing, to come forward now and just provide a little more detail as for the need for this project. Thank you.
Mr. Truselli, we just need to swear you in. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone from the zoning board, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The primary driver for us bringing this project to you tonight is to respond to the needs of our residents. We have a very significant parking shortage at Princeton Community Village for our existing residents. We've had several meetings with our residents, and the residents have expressed very clearly and distinctly their displeasure with the lack of parking. Many of our residents work late, and when they return home at night, they don't find parking in the location where they most need it. Where we're proposing the parking in the plan that you see, this is in the area where most of the two, three, and four-bedroom units in Princeton Community Village are located, and this is the location where the biggest need for parking adjacent to those units is most present. So it's really a response to our existing needs, and we're trying to, again, address that through this application.
How many parking places do you have per unit, in fact?
I believe 381, and I was just gonna...
No, I wanted, I can't divide that by the number of units, but in some sense...
It's less than what the ordinance requires.
In the group you're talking about.
Right.
One place per unit, or two places?
It's slightly over.
Sorry?
The required is 443.
That's the total requirement.
Yeah. Their proposal with these 25 spaces would be 406.
I see.
Right. So we're actually bringing the site into closer compliance with the ordinance in terms of parking.
Yeah. So you under-provided in the beginning, and I...
Well, you've got to remember when this was built again, 1975. There was, as far as I know, the parking standards that are in place today were not in effect.
Yeah, and the other factor is that people do use their cars to get to and from work, and, you know, that may not have been the case in the past, and the households now have three and four cars and some of the larger units, so that is the way people get to and from work.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to...
Any more questions for Mr. Truselli?
I have two questions. One is, can you tell us who actually owns this? Is this a Princeton-owned?
Yes.
I mean, your address is 1 Monument Drive, so...
Right. Princeton, the office where I work in 1 Monument Drive is Princeton PCH Development Corp. We are the actual managing agent. We manage the property on behalf of Princeton Community Village Associates, which is the actual owner. Princeton Community Village Associates is also an entity of Princeton Community Housing, which is a nonprofit here in Princeton.
Okay. The second question is, why aren't you proposing more parking spaces? Why just 25? Why not go for the total amount needed?
Or why aren't we not asking, requiring that?
Yeah, or either one.
Well, I think, as our attorney alluded, we are looking at planning for additional units on the property to help Princeton meet its obligation for more affordable housing. So we're in the midst of that now, and the 25 spaces that we're planning right now address a current need, and we'll probably satisfy that on a temporary basis, but if we add more units, we want to have the flexibility to be able to add those units and the additional parking that's required.
That, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that, that goes to a question I had, which is, I know that the planning for these additional units is still ongoing, but is there any, is there any sense or potential for this project to negatively impact the ability to do that in terms of space on the property, or...
No, it's a good question. I think what you're saying is, would this preclude us from doing something that would benefit the greater project of adding some additional units?
Correct.
The answer's no. We've been working with an architectural firm, and we've identified some alternate or other locations on the property that would not involve this site, or this portion of the site that we have in this application.
And the other question I had, which is, maybe opening up a can of worms, I hope not, I'm just curious, is, you know, given that you have additional plans down the road, I mean, have you explored, you know, trying to get the zoning changed? Is that something that you're, have tried to do, are thinking about doing, we should consider doing?
We've had conversations with the municipality about that, yes, and as, you know, I think that's...
I think by and large, we should try and hear the case before us and deal with the details they're asking for, rather than trying to look into what their future might be.
Well, sure, but I just, just in the sense that these things impact what they can do going forward.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
A change in zone would make things a bit easier, but as you say, Mr. Chair, we've got to deal with the facts that are before us.
You mentioned that the 25 will address your current need. What's your best estimate of your current need? Is it 25, 16? Yeah.
I think our best estimate is the 25. I mean, we're fairly confident on a, again, on a temporary basis until more units are added. That should satisfy the issue.
So do you, I drove around the site, and I can't claim to know what it's like to be there over a period of time and what the parking usage is, but I did notice a lot back by Holly House that seemed, I noticed a lot of spots, but particularly there where there was, just, I wondered if that was an area that people probably almost never use unless they have nowhere else to park, like the people coming home late that were mentioned. And I wondered if it was a matter of where you wish the parking spots were, that maybe, whether that spot would continue to be, or maybe even used less in the future. And that may be out of our purview here, but I just, it made me wonder if you maybe don't need that many more spots, you just wish they were in a different place.
Well, part of it is adjacency. Yes, you're right. That's why these spots are being located where they are, where the larger units are present. I'm curious, what time of day did you visit the property?
It was around, it was around dinnertime, like around 6 o'clock, 5:30.
Okay. Another half hour or an hour or so, that lot would start to fill up because people are returning from work. The Holly House, the parking in front of Holly House is really for Holly House. We do reserve, or I should say, is each tenant is entitled to one parking space, and Holly House is the one-bedroom apartments, so typically those spaces are filled with cars because everybody, pretty much everybody has a car in that building. So will fill up.
Okay.
I wanted to ask about, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to touch base and ask Mr. Letizia to please address the matters that were raised by the Environmental Commission.
If I had a copy of the commission, of the report...
I happy to provide it, sir. Surprised that you would not have...
First time, been taken back that there was a report from the commission I didn't see, but, okay. Maybe if you give us a few minutes to look at it, and we could address it at a later time in the hearing. Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Truselli?
Just a quick one about the height of the lights. You know, you mentioned that you want to, you want to match the 16-foot height around the site, which makes sense. I'm wondering, is that, like, functionally, what's the outcome if you end up at 14-foot? I mean, is it, is it an aesthetic issue, or is it that at 14 feet, you don't think that the parking lot would be appropriately lighted? Is there a concern other than kind of the matching?
I think we'll defer to our civil engineer to discuss that, but I think from an aesthetic point of view, we were simply trying to match the height, and I think from a functional point of view, I don't, I don't know that it makes all that much difference, but I'll defer to the engineer on that.
You have other people presumably who are going to talk to us.
I do, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll now call Louis Zugner.
With the greatest amount of respect, Mr. Letizia, did you have the opportunity to, a lot of what we're going to be discussing and asking you about is going to be based upon the recommendations of this group. For you not to have read it is potentially not going to do any of us good service this evening.
I mean, I think you should make your case, you've got documents that you may want to refer to later, but I am going to lose the-
I understand, Mr. Chair. We're ready to go.
So you have another person who wishes to be affirmed as being truthful, and then he will give us information, if I understand that.
Sir, first, would you state your name for the record?
My name is Louis Zugner, Z-U-E-G-N-E-R.
And Mr. Zugner, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Zugner, can you briefly provide to the board your professional qualifications, please?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing in this field for over 20 years, the founding principal of Mid-Atlantic Engineering in Hamilton, New Jersey. I've testified before boards, planning and zoning boards all across the state of New Jersey.
You haven't been before this board?
I have, but it's been quite some time.
We accepted you last time, we can accept you now.
Excellent.
Thank you. So, Mr. Zugner, maybe you can start by giving an overview of the site plan, and then perhaps addressing some of the comments.
Okay. So, if I may, I want to- To start with one of my boards. Do I, do you want me to mark this board, or?
Yes, if you could, Mr. Zugner, yes. And describe what it is.
A1 or something.
So this board, A1, is titled Princeton Community Village Parking Edition Overall Rendering, stated 10/11/17. And if you look at this plan, you can see the aerial image of the general area to give us a feel for where we are. You can see Hilltop Park, which is in the upper-left-hand corner of this plan, and sort of diagonally from lower left to upper right is a gas line easement that cuts through, outlined in red, somewhat of a triangle. The triangle is our 35-acre site. You can see Bun Drive running up and down the left-hand side of that site. 35.71 acres, it was mentioned before, 239 apartments, and you can see within this big site the various buildings either side of the easement, drives. Centrally located in here, and it's probably hard to see at distance, along Carlisle Boulevard, which is a semicircular shape just below the easement, the little dashed-in areas, which is where our parking is. If I jump to another board, I guess I'll mark this one A2, if that's okay. This is entitled Site Rendering, same date. This is a close-up, similar to what your professional had shown you, only colored. Essentially, what we attempted to do with this addition of parking spaces was to have the least footprint possible for various reasons, to limit impervious coverage and to limit disturbance on this site. The site is, if you've been up there, very unique in the sense that it has a lot of old growth, bigger trees, and very significant big rock, giant boulders. So, we've created this path that comes off of Carlisle Boulevard. We make use of Carlisle Boulevard instead of building a new roadway, and what we've designed, and it was shown on the other plan, is four extra spaces beyond the 25, because we know as we build this, there'll be boulders, we can't move, and, as was discussed before, the ability to move around some of these large trees and save them, we can then intersperse some islands where spaces would be, and effectively build this with, again, the least disturbance to the footprint. Build around those big rocks and big trees and save them. Can see also here in black the five light poles that would go in. So overall, the effort obviously is to sort of reduce this deficiency in parking and satisfy the need, the 25 spaces. I'll go through briefly, I know it's been discussed, the relief. The use, which is a D2, obviously is a pre-existing condition. There's sort of no remedy to this change in the use that doesn't meet the criteria. It's the OR zone, multifamily housing is not permitted. In terms of the D2, affordable housing is inherently beneficial use, and I don't believe needs to satisfy the positive criteria or special conditions, but it does need to satisfy the negative conditions, which would be the fact that this has no negative effect or impairment to the zone plan or the zoning. It exists, so the zoning essentially was built around this. It's always been known, it's always been seen, it does not impair the zoning. The parking itself has no impact to use, it's not changing or affecting the use. The parking is not part of the use in terms of a land use perspective, and there's no impairment to the public good by, or safety and welfare by adding parking spaces, it's a benefit. The other items as variances, again, are C variances or bulk variances. They fall into two categories, C1 or C2. C1 being a condition uniquely affecting this specific piece of property due to shape, size, or existing conditions. And C2, also called a flexible C, where the benefits have been shown to outweigh the detriments. So among these pieces of relief, one is the parking stall size, where we're one foot shallower than the ordinance requirement. Again, 9x18 is a typical design parameter, but we don't meet the ordinance, and this, I believe, is where the benefits outweigh the detriments. We're, again, trying to minimize our impact here. We're reducing impervious coverage, attempting to save trees by going to the smaller dimension. The shade tree plantings, where we've talked about one for every 3.4 spaces requiring eight new shade trees, and we're not planting shade trees. I think this is a case where, I would say, strict interpretation of that requirement is an undue hardship based on our existing conditions. It would be difficult to successfully plant trees here due to the old growth, large trees, and the shade it casts, and the significant amount of rock on the site. Further, you can see in this immediate area where we're planting, there's not an effective way to plant in and around that. We would be removing trees to plant trees. The next item, which is the screening, very similar to the shade tree plantings, for parking areas with greater than 10 spaces, this buffering is required. And if I go back to A1, which is my overall board showing aerial of the area, you can see again how these spaces are well within the overall community, to the general public, buffering of these spaces is not providing any effective benefit. You can't see it from Bun Drive, you can only see it when you're driving internal to the site, effectively along Carlisle Boulevard, and no screening of it's going to be able to, you know, essentially hide it from the people in the site that are using it. So I don't think you can effectively add to the screening of it, no matter how you were to plant it. So again, I see that as a sort of undue hardship to require buffering. And then the final one is the lighting. This is entirely aesthetic. We could meet this requirement, and there were some questions earlier. With the LED lighting, whether we're at 14 or 16 feet, those lights could be adjusted, and we can provide the same coverage. The LED, this is relatively new with LED, you can adjust the coloring, so we would be intending to adjust that coloring to match the other lighting. We're trying to aesthetically make them fit and not stand out. Among all the lighting on the 35 acres, we don't want these five poles to look different, so that is driven entirely where we think the benefits outweigh the detriments purely from an aesthetic standpoint.
What about on tree replacement?
So, again, much like I described with the variance relief, particularly right in the area of these parking spaces, there's nowhere to replant. And what I've often seen in terms of the contribution for tree replacement, it's on a site where you're planting some, but you can't plant all, or various different elements where it's a mix. Here, we can't plant trees, so in addition to being a financial hardship that was described before, you know, essentially, this site's seeing no benefit effect from trying to plant trees, and seeing a real negative from trying to contribute dollars where they would be used elsewhere in terms of this nonprofit benefit and this affordable housing community.
Mr. Zugner, I'm sort of going to put you on the spot because you haven't had a chance to review in detail-
I can't hear what you're saying. Could you use a little?
I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Zugner, because you haven't had a chance to review the Environmental Commission, but I think you might be able to handle a couple of these questions. There is a comment related to the stormwater design. It's being recommended that we install bioswells along the edge of the parking area where curbing is proposed. Do you have an opinion on that?
I think that some of the BMPs, like bioswells and other elements, as part of a greater mix for a site design, can be very effective. Here, I'd be particularly concerned because it is on the Boulevard and Circular Drive. When they get into proximity to moving traffic and combination of pedestrians and cars, I've seen them be problematic in terms of long-term maintenance, so I would think that that's a concern.
But to be clear, we meet all the current requirements. There is no mandate that we impose, that we-
We're not required to provide the bioswells.
Thank you, and that has not been recommended by the municipal engineer, I believe?
No, it has not.
Another stormwater question. There is a comment that in order to reduce stormwater runoff, we should use permeable impervious pavers or porous concrete in the parking, rather than bituminous paving.
Again, it's not a, we're not under an obligation or requirement to do that, and much like I described before, our intent was to really minimize the impact and impervious coverage here by location and design. All these elements, there is a cost impact to that, which this site's very certainly sensitive to added cost. Trying to solve or benefit the site by adding parking, adding additional costs, such as that might mean we're able to essentially budget for fewer parking spaces. I don't know that, but that would be-
How is the site drained as presently designed? The water just runs off onto areas that-
So, the overall-
I can't see that picture.
Yeah, the-
You've got the bigger one not behind there.
Right.
You've got a white piece, which I assume is the new piece you're building.
Here, correct.
And how are you draining that?
This would be graded to runoff into-
Onto the street.
Into the woods. Eventually, it's collected into onsite drainage inlets and makes it to a stormwater basin.
So there are stormwater drains on the road that's running through there?
Yes.
Yeah. What about snow removal?
Uh, well-
We're coming into a part of the year where snow is going to be fairly-
Right. I would envision that these spaces, the snow would be pushed to the back of the spaces towards the woods.
But you've made the spaces shorter.
But I, well, it would be pushed off, so it would be pushed the full depth back into, you can see like where the light poles are, at the edge of the woods, under the trees. It would not need to be bucketed or removed from the site, it could be pushed off of these spaces.
Okay. And, Mr. Zugner, do you have an opinion about the, whether there's a safety concern with having these vehicles backing into the drive?
Well, I believe the design is safe, certainly wouldn't have designed it if I thought it weren't. You can see there's an island in the middle that coincides with where Mulberry Row comes out into the Boulevard, so that we've eliminated parking in that interchange directly in that location. The overall traffic and circulation volume is not so high here, it is still within the community that parking should, there should be no difficulty in parking and pulling out of these spaces.
And isn't it true that today, there is some parking going on in this area?
Part of what's happening here is, these parking spaces are attempting to satisfy parking for vehicles that are on the site. So the current condition, vehicles are trying to find wherever they could park these added vehicles. So this is overflow parking to take those vehicles and get them into spaces, provide some additional spaces, so it's going to be certainly safer than the current condition.
And you mentioned that in addition to the 25, there are some additional spaces located that will allow some flexibility to-
Right, and, again-
In terms of disturbance, correct?
Going up and being on this site, and part of what makes it unique in both positive and difficult way, is the rock that's on this site is really significant, and so as you go to look to do anything at this site, even adding these few parking spaces, it has to be part of the calculus, how do we build around this rock in a manner that's effective and can be accomplished? And if you look at other parts of the site, you'll see they did similar things, lots of islands and gaps and spaces. You can see the top of rock that was certainly too big to be moved, and that's what we're imagining we're going to find, and so we've created these added eight spaces because we know at some point we might come to, say, a space here, need to either save a tree or avoid rock that's too big to move, and that'll then become an island, a grassed island, and the parking would continue. So when it's complete, this parking is going to extend several spaces beyond where it's shown.
So we have the flexibility to actually build in the area that's currently noted as alternate, and then-
Right.
Designate other spaces as alternate.
Correct.
And that was suggested by both SPRAB and the Environmental-
Correct. And I would even say it another way, if we told you we were building the spaces here and didn't plan in this manner, we would be back here again in the middle of construction asking for permission to amend it.
But the total's 25.
25, right.
I have no further questions for Mr. Zugner.
Have you done a survey of the nature of vehicles that are likely to be parked? I mean, my understanding of compact cars is such that they were popular at one time, but now we're going back to pickup trucks. A lot of these have towing devices on the rear end of them, people have prongs out on the back of their cars so they can put bicycles on and things like that. Is your parking space big enough for the present sort of vehicle mixture?
Yes, and in today's design mechanism, if you were to follow RSIS at many ordinances, 9x18 is the standard. 9x19 is your requirement here, and that's, not a knock on that, but 9x18 does accommodate all-size vehicles. The only times I've seen 9x18 be problematic are, say, in a shopping center or grocery store where cars are constantly moving things in and out of vehicles and doors, having a little extra width is helpful, but the 18-foot depth is not significantly a problem, and compact spaces can be designed at various different dimensions, but they're as small as 8.5 x 16. We've done urban compact spaces.
No, I understand. I don't think compact cars are the problem.
Right.
I think the eight-seat pickup truck with a bed behind it is the sort of vehicle that I could imagine being parked in there.
I believe that Suburbans and Tahos and pickup trucks would fit in these spaces.
And in your opinion, they would fit in that space with no problem.
Yes, and there's room for overhang, isn't there? Correct. So, here, there's nothing at the back of this space, you know, in a hypothetical scenario, if you were pulling into a space there, we had sidewalk or other impediments beyond that space, we would need to somehow create that, it's generally considered a two-foot overhang beyond the end of the space for a vehicle to pull fully in and hang out.
Okay.
You know if there's a reason why the area you want to put the parking is barren, there's no trees there? I know you haven't done a geotactical, you don't know exactly.
Right here, you're referring to where we have a grade? We've essentially, in this image, drawn over trees, so if we went to Google Earth and looked at this without my drawing on it, you'd see all trees right up to Carlisle Boulevard. In fact, we're removing, I think, 12 trees to get these spaces-
I guess what I saw, and I just Googled it. I guess what I saw, and I just Googled it, it looked a lot less dense than the trees behind.
Oh, right at the edge of the?
Okay. I'm trying to get comfortable with the parking in and backing out. And I'll just have to try to do that. Did you look at any other parking arrangements, designs?
We did look overall at the site, and one of our driving factors here was proximity to these larger units. Because I think one of the members of the board had talked about before, where we place these spaces is as important as the number. They need to be where they're needed, otherwise they don't get used. So we wanted to be in this area, and then from that, we tried to determine, again, an area with the least input, or least impact to the site in terms of disturbing areas. And this seems suitable to me, and it does not seem unsafe to me. I don't, this is not a road that I think carries the level of traffic where you can't pull in and back out. I think that there's visibility for cars going around this curve. People will know that there's parking here. The people who park here live here. And I, there's no real pedestrian path that interferes with those spaces, so.
Have you spent much time observing traffic?
Have I? I've been on the site a number of times. Have we done an onsite study or accounts? No, but we have talked with management who's there every day.
If I may just add a comment to Mr. Zuckner's testimony. The actual, the configuration that we're proposing actually exists on the site currently down Sassafras Row, which is just off of Carlisle Boulevard. So people are already in the prop, you know, the habit of backing out into the road. You know, that's been going on for several years. And again, Mr. Zuckner was correct. I mean, he did consult with me and our onsite property management staff about how best to configure the parking so that there would be a minimized risk of any conflict between pedestrians and cars.
Could we return briefly to the light fixtures? People are going to be using that to tell me late at night, in many cases, as a place to park and/or backing out of there. The lighting will extend not only over that piece that I see white there, but over the adjacent street? Is it acting as street lighting as well as?
So there are existing lights out there. That's what we're trying to match. I'm just going to look at one thing quickly.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
So in part of what we submitted in our plan, when we did our lighting design, we modeled both these spaces with the existing lights along Carlisle Boulevard and these added five. So what we're showing to your professionals is how this street and the new parking is lit in its entirety, both with existing and proposed lights.
Okay.
So our supplemental five are to sort of fill in the gap where we're adding spaces.
And you're saying because the proposed lights are in fairly close proximity to the existing ones, you prefer to keep them all at the same height? Somebody mentioned the color of the lighting. I don't know what the existing lights are. What are they?
They're older-style sulfur light, which is sort of a yellowish color.
I'm sorry?
They're an older-style sulfur light, which is a yellowish color. And it's what you would have years ago been used to seeing everywhere. It's what you would normally expect to see. And on its own, you wouldn't notice it. But if I put in five new LED lights that are a very strong white color, they would look like two entirely different things going on on the site.
I understand.
And so they, lighting fixtures have adjusted very recently to allow us to color the LEDs. And they can be in a bluish color. They can be in all sorts of different colors. But they can be made to sort of match and fit into that sulfur yellowish color.
So you're losing the advantage of the efficiency of the light emitting diodes to.
No, it would be still far more efficient than another type of light. I don't think there's much efficiency lost in changing the color. It's a little less bright.
For the same power, that's a loss of efficiency. Sorry. Yeah, okay. Do we have other questions? Of this witness? You wish to go further?
That completes our direct presentation, Mr. Chair. We're ready to listen to your comments and hopefully.
Are there members of the audience who wish to address this case? I see no one. Okay. So I guess we can go into executive session and discuss the issues and see whether we want to grant this or put additional constraints on what can be done. You look as if you want to say something. Yes, do you? No, you don't. I thought you were looking as if you wanted to speak. Mr. Tananov, did you, you had some concerns about meeting the recommendations on the document?
Yeah, I think everything sounds good. I'm wrestling with the requiring them to get the trees. I'm not as familiar with these. I, when people tell me that they're nonprofit, that doesn't necessarily mean it's an entirely charitable type organization in my mind with certain things and where they're explaining to me that, like other entities that have come before us that have thrown themselves on the sympathy of our deep understanding and appreciation of their financial needs. I'm a bit skeptical of that with regards to the replacement of 20 trees. So everything else I'm okay with.
I think the nature of the site was, it's basically got terminal moraine from glacier underneath it sort of thing. It's probably correct to say that it's not a very easy site in which to place trees.
Oh, absolutely. But the idea of paying to have trees put in other places. They're eliminating 12 of them, so that, that part, and I'm happy to be educated because if, the last thing I want to do is pick the pocket of an organization that would truly need that financial resource. And I'm not, I don't have an intention of doing so if that's the case. That being said, there are many, many, many nonprofits here in Princeton who frankly would be able to fill an arboretum with trees. I just don't know this one.
We can't lose sight of this is affordable housing, okay?
This is affordable housing that seems to be done in a different level of layers with different corporate structures and other things. So, and I don't, and there's a management company and there are other things. So educate me.
Happy to.
Well, I don't know if I can dissuade your skepticism, but I will attempt to give you some background on what kind of organization we are. We've been around for 50 years, Princeton Community Housing. And this particular community is our oldest community. And we are operating the community under the supervision of the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency. And they monitor our expenses, and we have to submit a budget every year in order to basically get, you know, the funding from the agency or the subsidy from the agency to help support the rents that the residents pay. So in other words, the residents pay rent that they can afford to pay, but that doesn't cover the expenses of running the community. So there are programs and subsidies available to help us meet that gap. So if we have an unbudgeted expense, it has to come from someplace. And that would, in some cases, require us to not provide services to our residents if we have an unbudgeted expense.
So if I understand correctly, it's your testimony this evening that if we do not go forward with this, the $8,000 budgetary shortfall that you may have to incur because of our requiring you to add these trees would cut services to the people that are living in the facility?
I wouldn't say it would cut services, but I would say it would be a shortfall that we would have to address in some manner. It's an unbudgeted expense, and it's something that we would have to figure out how to pay for.
Okay. And the funding that you get, help me understand please, because again, I'm just a poor country lawyer. When you're saying you're getting funding from, with these organizations that have New Jersey in the name, might that be a state organization? So the funding comes from state government? Or is this something that could be, you know, the BMW of New Jersey? Help me understand what that is, please.
Well, I don't know if we have enough time to fully go over all the ins and outs, but I would say that the Department of Housing and Urban Development has a mortgage on this property, so that's.
That's federal.
Federal, correct. And then, as I said, the state agency, the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency, helps provide supervision of our management of the property and also provides a mortgage subsidy that helps offset the mortgage interest that we have to pay on the property. So again, everything is budgeted very closely, and we do look to balance sustainability and good practices in property management with our fiduciary responsibility to our budget and the people who supervise us. So again, yes, it would be an unbudgeted expense, would be a hardship, and we would have to find a way to pay for it.
Maybe we could, I think, get to the gist of his question. Do you run out of profit? Do you run in the last three years? I mean, regardless of what the budget, do you, is it profitable, non-profitable, you know, in actuality?
Yes. Well, we've been fortunate that we do have a surplus, but those surplus funds are often put right back into the community to do capital improvements. And that's what we generally do. So it's not like we have a surplus and we have money that we're squirreling away for something else. We're putting it toward a property that is now, you know, over 45 years old and needs to be improved, so it's for capital improvements.
Do we have any other comment?
Weren't there, just to get back to the trees, weren't there two financial issues? One would be the cost of replacing, and then there was, I heard something else about, but if you could set the money aside for future, is that the same amount? Are we talking about the same thing? Either that you would replant them or you would put that money aside for future development?
Right. I think, as Mr. Bridger described, it was in the SPRAB report when we had that meeting with those folks, we talked about how we would prefer to use our funds for providing more affordable housing on this property. And as some of you may know, we are working, again, collaboratively with the municipality to try and do that. And, you know, there are many expenses involved in planning and designing that new 40 units, which is what's on the table. So again, those funds, if directed instead of toward trees, would be directed toward the furtherance of that project, we feel that would be a better use of the money.
Is there some way we could be assured that actually was put in that escrow in that way? I don't know. It just seems like it can kind of get lost in the shuffle. I find it hard to think that you couldn't, first of all, put the trees somewhere else on the lot, you know, because it's not just that they need to be close to where they were. So that's, you know, there may be, maybe there are boulders everywhere. So it just seems like there are a lot of different issues here. But I would hate for us to agree to the trees not being needed to be replaced, and then potentially that money just kind of gets lost in the ether and it doesn't actually go towards what you're saying. That would be unfortunate.
There are two issues really about the trees. One is the quality of life in the environment. If you don't want to chop all of the trees down and have houses in a totally bare environment, that's not an attractive environment in which people can live. And our current worry about carbon dioxide is, I think, the other thing that's driving, plant more trees, plant more trees, plant more trees, believing that they will gobble up enough carbon dioxide that global warming won't destroy our lives. And if you look at that aspect of it, it's a nice thing to say, but it's not really a proven situation. Trees are good, but they also rot and put carbon dioxide into the atmosphere in that process. And whether there are really good storage spaces for carbon dioxide is unclear. So I think I would be very disturbed if they were removing trees and downgrading the quality of life for people there because the place didn't look nice. There wasn't shade and that sort of thing. The planting of trees for the carbon dioxide issue, I feel less secure. I mean, it's a good idea if you can do it, but there may be, as we are told, other things that would be better for the people living in the environment than planting some trees elsewhere in Princeton.
Well, right, but the Environmental Commission was concerned about screening for the residents in that area.
Screening, if trees for screening, I agree.
And that's in here.
They can be bushes or.
That's not, that's not being addressed as something.
Well, I think our testimony is that we don't think screening is necessary because it's already well screened.
Well, I'm just saying the Environmental Commission does.
That was their opinion. I think we had expert testimony saying that there's plenty of screening of these spaces, but.
It's not going to screen from behind them.
But that's not what the requirement is. The requirement is to screen from adjacent properties. These parking spaces are for the residents. You want to be able to see the parking.
You're playing a game in a sense when you say that. I agree. You're absolutely factually correct. But it's not nice for residents to have a parking lot put in where they were looking at something that was pleasant and green before. So screening the parking lots from the residents is not a bad policy for developing a piece of property.
Right. I agree with you, and, but I will say again that the existing property, there are parking spaces that face the units, and there is screening in some places and there isn't screening in other places. So it isn't, again, it wouldn't be unexpected for people to see parking spaces in front of their, in front of their building. And in this case, there's an 85-foot wide easement between the front of the parking spaces and the unit. So there's quite a distance. And in addition, those units on the other side of the easement have screen walls in front of them. So again, the headlights, if.
So you're taking care of those.
Yeah, I think, I think that issue is less of a concern in this particular case.
Yeah.
And the people on the other side of this road. I'm, I know, I saw the site, so I saw that big, nice, kind of almost field there on the other side of the, of the woods.
That's the easement.
But almost the backside away from Bun Drive, those people have some cars, and then there's the road, and then there's going to be, then there's going to be this parking. So that's, that, I mean, they are already looking at cars, but those are going to be in, these new cars are going to be kind of in the way of that nice green space for them now.
When you say the green space, you're referring to the easement?
Yes, I guess, yeah.
We can't plant there.
But, well, I think, it's also, I don't know that you can actually see the green space from the units you're referring to. You can see the easement from the units that directly back up onto it.
The ones that are close to the Bun Drive.
Yeah. So I don't think there's, because there's also a berm along Carlisle Boulevard behind or, you know, in back of those new proposed spaces. So the folks on the other side of Carlisle Boulevard won't be able, they'll never see it.
They haven't enjoyed it to begin with.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't get out and.
That's okay.
See that part, so.
Mr. Lutisi, just a quick question for you. Going through the Princeton Environmental Commission comments and recommendations, I don't, did your engineer address the comment about angle parking? I don't know if he did. I don't know if that makes a difference to the board. It was, I guess.
He did not address that. You're correct.
Is that of concern to the board? Would that perhaps go towards alleviating at all this concern about backing up?
What was that?
It's the first, it's on the second page of the Environmental Commission report. Comment one on the second page.
I don't think he addressed it directly, but I think he did say that, that there's a similar parking setup at another place on the property that hasn't had any concerns. I mean, my assumption when I read that, and I was going to ask this question, but then I also thought that it seems, it seems like if you're talking about angled and parking, you're just talking about disturbing a wider expanse of space, which is, which is contrary to the goal of trying to maintain as many trees as you can. So I assumed that that was the issue.
That's exactly correct. Well, often angled spaces seem like a good idea. When you start to put them to paper, they're always inefficient. They're always.
They always take up more space in the end, and I'm not quite sure how it would benefit sightlines. I'm not really understanding the comment in that perspective. You still are backing out, you're still traveling on the same road, you're still looking both directions, so being angled doesn't particularly help your sightlines.
Actually, it might make it worse in this sense, because of the curve.
It's possible, it'd make it even worse, but I think that the most effective and efficient way to do parking in general is ninety-degree. I think it's safe here, and I think that is the best design that was shown.
Well, the idea of the angled parking is surely that you have to make a smaller turn angle as you back out of the parking space. And if you back out normal to the road, then you're doing a semicircle in the road, whereas you've got half of your semicircle taken place by the other. I agree, the angled space takes up a little bit more depth to make it sensible, but it may be more convenient, but as, I believe you gave testimony that suggests that this is a very low-traffic-carrying road that you're backing into, it's probably almost a moot point as to whether an angled or a non-angled place is it.
I would agree with that, yes.
And I think I, you know, I take your testimony, as he alluded to, and although I did have some concerns with the backing out, I will point out that the Traffic Safety Committee didn't take any issue with it.
I move, oh, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
I was going to say, I move that we accept this plan with the one caveat that the money that would be spent on trees be reserved for future low-income housing.
Is that a constraint we can legally put on? It doesn't sound very zoning-wise.
Well, I'll tell you how I look at it, and we'll see if Mr. Lutizzi objects. The argument advanced by the applicant is that because it's affordable housing, it meets an inherently beneficial need, and for that reason, they're not obligated to address what we'd call the positive criteria. How, how in other ways will they meet special requirements for getting a D-variant? And that's a variance, remember, that needs at least five affirmative votes, so it's normally a higher standard of proof than a variance for the size of a parking space, let's say. So in this instance, it seems to me that is the testimony that's been provided by the applicant, that they don't want to spend money on landscaping because they feel it's better spent on affordable housing, which is in the public good. So I'm not too troubled if the board wants to provide that caveat to you, because it appears to be completely consistent with what you've testified to tonight, so.
I have my normal thing about lighting. I'm very concerned about the way we spill light willy-nilly all over the place, and I don't mind your fittings being higher, but I would put a constraint on the light throw from them. And my normal constraint is that the actual light source itself should not be visible from off the area that you're illuminating, and that there should be no light spillage over the boundaries of that area, because otherwise, it's like the town does, it puts up a great light, it shines all the time. My bedroom is five hundred yards away, and it shines in my bedroom window at night. So I think that I'm very concerned about that type of invasion, so I want that constraint put on the light fixtures and the light throw from them. I think lead is a good idea, and I don't think that will constrain you on doing it.
It's acceptable.
Do we have any other caveats that we would like to add to this proposed approval?
Mr. Schreiber, I'm assuming that you're proposing those bulk variances be C2 variances, which I think is how it was presented by Mr. Bridger. Is that acceptable? Okay.
Yes, it's a C2. And then the other, the other one is just because they're not allowed to do this anyhow, we need to give a variant, we're giving the variance because this is in the wrong district or something as well, no?
Well, no, the, the case that's been made is that you should give the variance because it's an inherently beneficial use in the community.
Yes.
And, and there's no negative impact because the parking is set back on an interior road, it won't be seen from Bun Drive, so the argument is there's really no negative impact to the general public.
Okay.
But the other question I did have, Mr. Lutizzi, you don't have any problems then with the comments and recommendations in Mr. Bridger's memo? I don't...
I don't believe so. No, let me just look at it real quick.
Okay.
No, we agree with those recommendations. LED lighting, we agree to do, and the other comment about...
Soil conservation?
Discuss excess boulder use. I think the intent is to, as was suggested by SBRAB, to use some of the boulders as sort of part of the landscaping around the parking, to the extent they can be moved. Some of the boulders, they're going to be so large, we won't be able to move.
All right, and with the Environmental Commission, I think, other than the LED lighting request...
There's an EV charger mentioned in this environmental stuff. You're not proposing to put one of those in?
Yeah, we'd like, we respectfully disagree with that comment. Again, it's a, it's an added cost that, and we think it will not be used.
Which one?
Sorry? Were there's a suggestion that in the parking space, there'd be at least one place you could put in an electric car and charger? Maybe you have to keep on adding quarters to the meter or something? I don't know. It's a possibility, but it certainly could be retrofitted if there was a need.
I just, I think that...
Well, if we don't require it now, it probably won't happen.
No, that's right. They have said they don't want to do it.
I mean, I think it falls, I was going to say, going back to the financial discussion a bit ago, I think it falls into the category of, I mean, I know a number of us on the board have some experience with affordable housing development, and I think, you know, they've made the point that, that, you know, it's very difficult to finance these things, and it's the, the, the government agencies that provide the funding really don't let you, you know, take money out and do other things with it. It all goes into affordable housing. So I think if we're asking them to do these kinds of things, there really is a, sort of a zero-sum situation where it makes it more difficult for them to provide affordable housing, and I would support, you know, not, not adding additional costs here that aren't necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, right. I think I would too. They're basically a single-purpose entity, and it's creating housing. They, they can't go out, you know, by their structure and go do something, you know, different.
I would too, the only, the only thing that's kind of grating against me is, are we, because we embrace the mission of this nonprofit organization, are we willing to give them a pass on this amount of money? And should another nonprofit organization come before us, what kind of, and we may not, as a board, embrace their mission, what kind of precedent are we setting? You know, a church comes in and they decide to expand a parking lot, and it's a fabulous church, and we're all for it, fabulous, but then, you know, satanic worshippers build something here in Princeton, they want to add their parking lot, they want to knock down trees, and we're going to say, oh, don't worry about it, you're a nonprofit, so you don't have to replace the trees. But wait a minute, we don't like your mission, but we like everybody else's mission. I, I think there's a conflict here. Now, I, obviously, I'm probably blowing this out of proportion, but something about it just doesn't sit right with me.
But isn't the only...
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, it's not that they're a nonprofit, it's that they're a nonprofit that specifically is building affordable housing, right? That's the beneficial good. It's not just that they came in and said, hi, we're a nonprofit. So in that case, I mean, you're not only doing it because the fact that they're a nonprofit is, isn't the issue, it's really what their mission is.
But we, as a board, are making determination as to whether we should go forward based upon the mission of a nonprofit.
We're not really making that...
I have a problem with that.
I don't think we're making that determination. I think it's already been stated, right, by, didn't you state that as, as a right, this particular mission is considered to have, and is to consider to be inherently good, right?
Well, what, what the New Jersey courts have concluded is that, yes, affordable housing can fall into the category of uses that you would say are inherently beneficial, and other examples of those would be, which are actually in the New Jersey statutes, a hospital, a school, a childcare center, a group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility. And this is, New Jersey Legislature came up with that list. So the New Jersey courts added to that affordable housing as being a use that is beneficial, meaning that an applicant coming into you doesn't have to prove perhaps all the criteria that we might make them go through for this kind of a variance. I'm not viewing this as, dependent on whether they're a nonprofit. I realize that the applicant has presented that to you, saying, you know, we're really not a profit, we're not a developer in that sense, we're nonprofit. And so pretty much in, in terms of future cases, I don't know how many other nonprofits are going to come to you and say, I have an inherently beneficial use, because that category is fairly small. There aren't too many uses out there that, on the face of it, you'd be able to say, this, you know, this is really beneficial to the public, so I'd prefer that you landscape, but I'm not going to require it because, in this case, you've told me, we want to take that money and spend it on affordable units. And apparently, that's something that's being in the works now. So I think a distinction could be made between that and another group coming in simply saying, for financial reasons, I don't want to do it, I'd like a pass on it. Because I don't know that, obviously, each case is decided on its own facts, but I don't know how many other nonprofits will come in and say, I want to build affordable housing, all affordable housing. Not mixed, not I'm going to build ten normal units and I'm going to do one affordable, so give me a pass. So I understand...
All right, then perhaps we can have language that strictly constructs, so that we're not paying for any kind of lobbying effort, we're not paying for anything else, we're paying explicitly and specifically for affordable housing. And that, maybe that's it, because all the other examples you gave me were all nonprofits, and last time I checked, not a single hospital is hurting for money. Last time I checked, so, so all these other things that you mentioned all have the ability to pay for it. So if we're going to do it, then I think that's fine, and I'm okay with it. But if that's how we're going to go for it, then we need to be very explicit, in my opinion, because the organization does other things. If you look at their website, they do other things other than strictly affordable housing. They lobby, they do other things. Fine, if we want to do that, great.
Mr. Lutizzi, let me ask you something, because my recollection is that the testimony you provided was not just that PCH would prefer not to spend money on landscaping. Your engineer's testimony was, it's not needed, that the buffering is either not needed or it will be ineffective, given where these parking spaces are located. So I don't know what the board's take on that was, if you accept that, if you agree with that argument that's being made, but that is also an independent basis for giving them the design waiver or giving them the variance.
And, and since I made the motion, I'd like to go on the record as saying, that's why I made the motion.
Okay.
It had nothing to do with the not-for-profit status. It had to do with the, the site, and if you look at the site, it clearly doesn't need eight more trees. But on the other hand, there is that requirement, so that's why I suggested that that money should go towards something else, and not, not excusing that requirement, except for the fact that the site doesn't, doesn't have any need at all for eight more trees. Okay, so we have a motion, we've got two allowed conditions on it, one concerning the money they don't spend by not planting trees, and the other one associated with lighting. Are there any other conditions we want to put on there, or shall we, we haven't got a second of for the motion yet, we're trying to get the motion, so...
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second of it. Okay, so we can discuss the motion, and whether it meets the needs that we see it needs to meet. I don't think it is going to establish a precedent that we, as a board, will not be able to deal with when somebody comes up with something that they think is analogous. They'll have to argue that with us.
Right, I think...
I don't know. We'll go through the same thing that we went through this evening to some extent.
And to, to your point, Mr. Chairman, earlier, I mean, we have to respond to what, what the, the specifics of the case, and I think in this case, they've said to us, you know, we, we think, we would like to put this money instead into affordable housing so we can evaluate that. If someone else that was a nonprofit that had a different mission came, they would have to tell us what they want to do, do in their case, and we would have to evaluate that subject.
We've thrown out the nonprofit aspect of this, so we're not establishing a precedent for all nonprofits, I'm sure.
Right, but my, my point is that, that, that we're responding to what they're saying that they want to be doing with it, and our motion responds to that by saying, okay, you have to use the money for that purpose. So I think that we could do that in the future without, without considering this a precedent that's going to limit us.
Right, I, I think you, you hit the nail on the head. Rather than focus on the nonprofit, I think the resolution should emphasize the fact of, the board is determined that this money should go to affordable housing, that that's been determined to be a laudable goal in this context, and that's where the money should go, particularly because there's no room on the site for additional trees anyways.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second of. We've discussed the motion, I don't hear any further discussion, so I'll ask Claudia to call the roll for us.
I'm sorry.
I need to know what that caveat has ended up. What, what are we voting for as far as the way you want to fit it, the rationale? I've heard too much, I need to know.
Well, my understanding is, based, based on the clarification provided for Mr. Schreiber in his motion, that you're not requiring screening, tree replacement, or additional landscaping because of your determination that the site doesn't require any further landscaping, and that buffering is not required or would not be effective, given the location of these parking spaces.
It has an abundance of trees.
Okay. And that because of this fact, the motion proposes that the money that would be spent on landscaping can be allocated now to affordable housing. So that's how I, that's how I understand the motion.
Yeah, I think that's what we've said.
Okay.
We've accepted the reduced size of the parking spaces and various other things, and then there's my caveat on, on lighting and light spillage outside the actual site that's supposed to be illuminated. We've approved the, or we are approving by accepting this, the height of the light fittings as well, so that it at least has a uniform appearance over this and an adjacent parking. I think those are the only things we had to worry about, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And by, where the money is going towards affordable housing, we mean, we mean that it goes towards the future planning for the site, or what, you know, because that's...
I would like to suggest that it go for the future planning on this particular site, yes, if I may.
Because that's what I thought I heard you say early on, so.
Okay, so let's make that clarification.
I'm happy with that.
Sorry?
I'm happy with that.
You're happy with it?
I am happy with that.
Good, okay. So let's call the roll then.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Tenema?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We now come to the last case of the evening. So we'll shoo you out. So we'll shoo you out. That is Eight Edge Hill Street.
The next one? No. No, it's a C.
Which is a C2 variance request for installing a generator, a natural gas power generator. For some reason, I don't seem to have a case number on that.
Well, you got to sit down.
Do we have a case number for that? I can't find it on my paper.
Yeah, Z-1717548.
Okay. So if you'll come and sit down and be comfortable, I'll ask Mr. Bridger just to do what he always does, and that is to read the essence of his memorandum to the board into the record, and then I'll get you to make your statement as to why we should let you do what you want to do.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll just note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. The applicants, Robert and Jane McLennan, are requesting a C2 variance pursuant to Section 17820 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance to prohibit the installation of a natural gas generator in exception to the required accessory structure setback in the building coverage ratio, subject properties located in the R1 zone in the former Princeton Borough and the Mercer Hill Historic District, and subject to the use in, use in bulk regulations in accordance with Section 178227 and 230. Did review the application with both the chair and the historic preservation officer, and they determined that the proposed site of the location was not visible from the public right away and did not require review by historic preservation. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to lot width, the requirement is 125 feet, the existing is 77.8. It's noncompliant with respect to lot depth, the requirement's also 125, the existing is 40. It's noncompliant with lot area, the requirement's 20,000 square feet, the existing is 4,740 square feet. And the subject property is noncompliant with respect to the front yard setback requirement of 25, the existing's 11.2. The rear yard setback requirement is 35, the existing's 4.9 feet. And the building coverage requirement's 25, and the existing is 44.8. And the smaller side requirement, side yard requirement setback is 10 feet, and the existing is 2.8. Some of you board members may recognize this application. They were granted a variance for an air conditioner location somewhat in a similar location between the subject property and the adjoining house on, to the south, I believe. Copies of that findings, in fact, are attached. The new proposal is to put a generator kind of behind the garage between the, the adjoining property on Mercer Street, and it will increase the building coverage from 44.8% to 45%. The required setback for an accessory structure is five feet, and what they're proposing is 1.33 feet, and he's requested consideration under the C2 variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them.
Do we have questions, Mr. Bridger? No. Okay, if you will tell us why.
Mr. McLennan?
Well, I'd like to introduce my neighbors at Eight Edge Hill, I'm at Six.
We'll, we'll offer them the opportunity of talking once you've made your presentation.
Peter and Betsy Brown, and then...
Mr. McLennan, we just need to swear you in if you'd raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not really sure what I should say, other than what has just been said, and to probably refer you to the plan, and you can see why everything I do at the house, I have to get a variant. To put a window in, or to put the air conditioning in, or whatever, I'm right cheek by jowl. So I have to do this.
You might like to address the things the board might be concerned about, which would be noise, the emission of burned natural gas from this device, and whether it can enter windows or anything that are nearby. The screening, I think, is taken care of by the house and the fence that separates you from the neighbor.
Right.
But you might just mention those issues and put us in the right...
Well, what I wanted to do is call on Colin McCullough, who is the person who's going to put the unit in.
Okay.
So he has all the details, screening, and so forth, and if I could call on him...
So he should come forward, and we'll get him to swear to be truthful?
Can speak to that.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Colin McCullough.
Mr. McCullough, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I would say his...
You could ask him any questions.
The location of the generator is right behind the garage, so it's not part of the house it's lived in. There are two windows on the garage on that side, which is masonry, so the whole garage itself is non-combustible. The exhaust would be pointed towards the north, away from the neighbor's house, away from...
The neighbor's garage, though, that overlaps on the end of that space, no?
Is pretty far away. I'm looking at the map. Probably 20 feet away.
It's right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're, you're giving testimony to say that the, the gases that are mixed with the cooling air that goes out of this beast when it's running will be dilute and not cause any problems?
That's correct.
The issue of noise, it's screened by a wooden fence, a masonry house?
It is, and not only that, it's quieter than the two existing air conditioning condensers on the property.
Okay. So it won't add appreciably to, to the noise?
That's correct.
Now, my, I have one of these beasts, a different brand, but I have one. The, 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 the machine will run and test itself once a week, is that the normal frequency?
It can be programmed to run every other week, every week. Every other week is okay.
That keeps the battery properly charged.
That's correct, right. Runs the condensation out of the tank and keeps the battery charged, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You can program that time, by the way, so it could be Monday at noon, it could be Friday at midnight, whatever that...
Not Friday at midnight, that will violate the noise regulations, the sound above the background event.
Yes.
So during, when there's lots of traffic.
Got it, right. So during the day, midweek.
Yeah.
It's all programmable.
Good.
Mr. McCullough, you are going to install the generator, correct?
That's correct.
And you're with Princeton Air Conditioning?
I am, I'm employee of Princeton Air Conditioning, yes.
You had some neighbors you wish to call, or I can ask them if they wish to say anything?
Who live really very close to me, well, they're right next door, so if they want to say anything, certainly.
If either of you would like to make some statements to the board, you may come up and do that.
It's Mrs. Brown. And, and Mrs. Brown, if you swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I think I was before...
Talk into the microphone if you could, so that we can get it on tape.
I was here and testified on Bob and Jane's behalf about their air conditioner.
Oh, the air conditioner.
And you guys are very sweet, you were very concerned about the noise, and I never hear the thing. And if they do run the, the generator, which I understand they have to do about 20 minutes a week, this will be a minor incursion on our lives, and if it's anything like, you said it would be less noisy than the air conditioner.
Decibels are actually lower.
We can't hear their air conditioner. Our lives, I might add, are made very, very, very miserable by another neighbor whose air conditioner is so loud I can't use our back porch, and who had the air conditioner moved away from his home and, sort of, close to ours. But based on Bob and Jane's air conditioner performance, I would be, we are totally cool with your generator. I just can't, even if it was as loud as Jonathan's air conditioner, at least it would only be running 20 minutes a week, it wouldn't be running night and day also, so. We, and further testimony on her behalf? We've always found Bob and Jane, who are obviously good friends, very meticulous about and very responsible with their homes, so I'm sure if anything goes wrong with this generator, it will be quickly repaired.
So you have no objection to this device?
I haven't, I would strongly encourage it, in fact.
PSENG is terrible, and I, the longest mine has run is five days without stopping when a tree fell over and took a power line down, and it had done that in several other locations, so.
But...
But, you know, day and night, five days, that's the worst I've had in many years miners been in place.
Well, I'm, I'm sure if a hurricane came, that the noise of Bob's generator would be the least of my problems.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you want to come upstairs and make a comment? No. Okay, good. Do members of the board have questions?
No, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Sorry?
Like to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Could you call the roll then, Claudia, please?
Mr. Davidge?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Tenema?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, thank you very much. I guess our next meeting is the regular meeting, which is next week.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Okay, so those of you who can make it, please come at the regular time to the regular place, and we will adjourn.
All right, I'm missing that meeting, but I'll be at the January meeting.
Good.
Okay, you can help us do that.
Will some of them run a little long?